Okay, let's go ahead and get started. It's an honor to be here and a pleasure to be here. Uh-oh. So, I want to thank you guys for inviting us out here and looking forward to hearing you guys and, you know, just listening to your needs and stuff like that. And I'm glad we're here tonight. And Mr. Stamp, you want to go ahead and take it from there?
Sure. Good evening, Council.
Yep.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Great. So, it's good to be here. Toward the end of wrapping up the development of FY26 budget, I would like to take this opportunity to give great thanks to Martha Sparks and Caitlin and Jessica and the department heads, all the organizations and agencies that worked with us to come up with this budget. This was a year that we needed to flatten the budget. Obviously, we recognize that there are storm clouds on the horizon. All you have to do is turn on the TV or listen up. And so, we recognize that this year, we have a number of risks. First off, we can see policy shifting occurring at the federal level. There are federal grants that have been frozen. There are some federal grants that have been actually eliminated. On the state level, we see the state with a funding challenge in front of them, and they're shifting a number of things toward the county governments. An example of that are teacher pensions. This year, the counties are required to pay 50% of the teacher pensions, and historically, that was a state responsibility. We are seeing also economic pressures with the cost of materials. And as far as workforce challenges, we still struggle to compete with a very competitive workforce for talent. So with all that, we had to develop a strategy. The strategy was, after several years of addressing priority issues, to try to flatten the budget out. So you'll see the budget this year is less than the year before. Talbot County continues to budget conservatively. We've been successful in doing that over the last number of years. We've built a fund balance, recognizing that storm clouds were on the horizon and coming. We're seeing them clearer now. So we do have a good fund balance. We also engaged professional assistance to develop reserve policies to protect that fund balance as we move forward through some choppy water. This year, we eliminated any new positions. We did not add any positions to the general fund. And we invested a little less in our capital improvement projects because last couple of years, we invested heavily to infuse into the economy major projects such as the health department, the public safety building, the north end EMS station, the library upgrade to the school system at Chapel. And so, this year, we reduced the amount of money we're putting in CIP with the philosophy, "Let's finish what we started." And then, finally, we continue to adhere to our three-pronged strategy of personnel processes and projects. That's focusing on personnel, to retain them and recruit them, to examine our processes, to find ways to be more efficient, leveraging technology to do that, and to work on our projects. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Martha, who has done an excellent job and is very good at explaining the budget from this point on. So, thank you, Council. Martha, it's yours.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Martha Sparks, Finance Director for Talbot County. On April 15th, the County Council of Talbot County introduced the fiscal year 2026 budget of $161,052,000. This budget was formulated during meetings between the departments and agencies, finance and the county manager, and subsequent work sessions with council. Each request was thoughtfully considered, and the budget before you is a result of those So first, I want to start with a review of fiscal year 2025 budget. The general fund budget for fiscal year 2025 is coming in on the positive side for both revenues and expenditures. The FY25 budget has supported improvements to general government services, communications, and overall government effectiveness. An example of this would be improved communications with citizens and the public. Our communications manager, Sarah Kilman, has utilized new software for outreach to our community. And you can see an example of this when you go to our website and look at the FY26 budget. It actually, it has an alternative option there for you to comment on the budget. And that's just one of many examples of how that has improved. New and strengthened IT resources have improved our network connection, cybersecurity, efficiency, and payments to vendors and to our employees. Progress on capital projects include contracting with a company to provide computer-aided dispatch, moving us to the next step of acquiring a new system, completion of the new public safety building with the sheriff and EMS offices who have already moved in. The county has also signed a new Motorola lease for the lease purchase of 911 consoles to be installed at the new building, paving of main connector roads throughout the county, including Airport Road. There's also continued construction on the St. Michael's Library and renovation project. In fiscal year 2026 budget, the general fund budget of $161,052,000 was formulated using the county's historically conservative budgeting methodology with moderate adjustments. These budget practices have served the county well and have placed us in a healthy financial position. This budgeting methodology involves modestly projecting revenues, evaluating the need and impact of expenditures, and a strategic use of fund balance. This practice is deliberate as it forces the county to carefully consider any addition of recurring expenses such as full-time positions. All of this combined has helped Talbot County to retain low property and income tax rates and to keep other fees down. Another result of this budgeting strategy is that our reserves have grown. This has placed the county in a strong position to weather the storms of financial uncertainty. Financial uncertainty that we have just begun to face from the federal government and the state of Maryland. In addition to new reserve policies approved by council earlier this year, they provide funding and risk mitigation strategies that aid us also in formulating this budget. With these new reserve policies in place, the county has shifted budget projections for income tax, recordation, and transfer tax revenues to be more in line with historical trends. The FY26 budget has prioritized investments in infrastructure through the completion of existing projects and adding new ones like ADA upgrades to county buildings, county storage facilities, and county pools facilities. The Talbot County property tax rates are calculated in accordance with the Talbot County Charter and with the Maryland Education Article Section 5-104D. That includes 2% additional revenues over S-Stat certified revenues from the prior year, and then 1 cent is added to the calculated property tax rate, and that was approved by the voters in 2020 and 2024. Any increases in school funding can be passed through the education supplement per the Maryland Education Article 5-104. There is no change to the income tax rate. Income tax revenues are volatile and will be even more so moving forward as a result of the state of Maryland approving higher tax rates on half-millionaires and millionaires. The last time this type of tax was implemented, Talbot County's income tax revenues decreased by 40% within one year, and it took 10 years to get back to those same levels. By maintaining a low income tax rate, the county hopes to mitigate the migration of our high-income earners. There have also been no increases to the county's schedule of fees. This slide shows our fund balance changes from 2016 to present. First, when I start discussing reserves, I want to make sure that I note that reserves for any government entity should only be used on non-recurring purchases, projects, or payments, and not to be used on recurring expenses such as personnel. Talbot County reserves provide healthy benefits to the county. First, it affords the opportunity to demonstrate strong financial management of the county to credit rating agencies. This enables the county to obtain the best interest rates in going out to bond and translates to a lower cost of borrowing for the county. The county will be going out to bond market in the upcoming weeks for the Chapel Elementary renovation and addition project. Second, with the new reserve policies put into place, it demonstrates a conscious effort to plan for the use of these reserves. New reserve policies put in place, set aside reserves for specific uses, and those are rainy day, risk mitigation, and a permanent public improvement reserve. So in the chart, years 2016 through 2024 are historical data, and for 2025, I've taken 2024's fund balance levels and put them into the reserve categories in accordance with our new policies, so I can demonstrate what that's going to look like. So our FY26 budget highlights for expenditures. The largest portion of Talbot County's recurring operating expenditures go toward funding of Talbot County Public Schools, and that includes the required adjusted local share funding of $55.1 million, additional mandated funding for the blueprint coordinator of $127,500, capital projects at $260,500, and an increase in debt service for Chapel Elementary Project at $2,115,000. For FY26, the TCPS appropriation and debt service for facilities account for 42.9% of the county's FY26 expenditures, also called the operating budget. Also included in the FY26 budget is a 2.5% cost of living adjustment and one performance-based step for county employees. And as the county manager mentioned, no new government positions, general government positions. Fund balance reserves will be used to invest in $3.84 million for capital outlay or equipment vehicle purchases, $13.7 million for capital projects, $1.7 million for recreation fund capital projects. The state of Maryland has mitigated their budget deficit by pushing their liabilities down to the counties. Talbot County is now responsible for paying an additional $176,000 for 40% of the cost of the local S-Stat office. Previously, counties covered the cost at 50%, and I think I had those percentages mixed up when I gave my presentation earlier today, so I apologize for that. On the schedule here, we'll see the total for general fund revenues and the changes between last year's approved budget and the FY26 proposed. Each year, I want to point out each year, revenues from the education supplement of the property tax resets to zero. Those revenues are then folded into total property tax revenues. They become a permanent cumulative part of the tax rate for future years. The education supplement portion of the property tax rate can only be used for funding increases to TCPS in the new budget year. All revenues reflected on this schedule have been increased to reflect historical trends, slightly modifying the county's historically conservative budgeting methods. And in this slide, I'm showing just the total general fund revenues. You can see that property taxes comprise 42% of general fund revenues with income tax revenues at 24.5% of general fund revenues. Other local taxes such as recordation, transfer, and other local taxes account for 9.9% of general fund revenues. For general fund expenditures, the net increase in funding to Talbot County schools from FY25 is $539,849. Debt service for the schools will increase as a result of the bond issuance that will occur in the upcoming weeks. General fund debt has increased for the county as the result of a multi-year lease for new 911 radio consoles for the new public safety building. Operating costs for the county have increased 5.6%, mainly as a result of fixed costs related to our workforce. Capital outlay has an increase of $1.2 million in capital outlay or one-time costs, non-recurring costs for vehicles, equipment, and small improvements. There is also one-time increases of $2.3 million in transfers to the recreation fund for capital outlay and CIP projects for the community center and Hognet Golf Course. So with this slide, these general fund expenditure categories are consistent between our budget ordinance and our annual comprehensive financial report or statement. In those financial documents, education expenditures include not only Talbot County Public Schools but also the Talbot County Free Library and Chesapeake College, and this represents 40.2% of all general fund expenditures. Public safety accounts for 24.7% of general fund expenditures, with general government at 11.9% and public works at 5.1%. As I mentioned earlier, the state of Maryland has mitigated their budget deficits by pushing their liabilities down to the counties. We are now responsible for paying $440,000 for teachers' retirement. Previously, this has been 100% funded by the state of Maryland. This is a new mandate from the state and will be billed to us directly from the state. It is not part of the school's budget. And there is an additional $12,858 for community college retirement. And at this time, I'd like to speak to the importance of the education supplement. Talbot County is very limited in the revenues that it can generate. Per our charter, each year, we can only add 2% over S-Stat certified revenues from the previous year plus 1 cent on the tax rate that's calculated. These new revenues are used to support general government expenditures. The education supplement can only be used to provide new funding for that year's increase in education. If we don't use it, then it will need to be provided by revenues that are currently used to support general government services. These costs are liabilities of the state of Maryland that I mentioned earlier. They were pushed down to the counties in order that they could balance their budget. This means that the burden of raising revenues for teacher pensions falls on the counties instead of the state. We cannot use reserves to fund recurring expenditures. This creates an unsustainable budget. If we do not use the education supplement, we will always be in the hole for $440,000. We can't play catch-up and add it to the education supplement or our property tax rate in a subsequent year. Our tax increases by our charter's design are moderate increases and are reflected in our standing as the county with the lowest property tax rate in the state of Maryland. The Talbot County Charter requires us to live within our means. It forces county staff to find the most effective and efficient ways to provide government services to our citizens and visitors. Here is a schedule of history of property tax rates since 2019. And as I mentioned, the education supplement is not cumulative. That rate resets each year. And on this screen, you can see the impact on a house, a home with an assessed value of $300,000. And as I mentioned earlier, boy, it sure would be nice if that assessment didn't change since 2019, but to make sure that you can compare apples to apples, we keep that at $300,000 for the sake of this illustration. So you can see right now as that the property tax rate is only going to be an increase of $4.80. And here is a copy of the Talbot County Tax Bill as with the proposed rates currently. Here's a slide that shows the property tax rates of other counties in the state of Maryland and local income tax rates for the state of Maryland. In August of 2024, we had a reassessment by Fitch using their new credit rating criteria, and they reaffirmed our rating of AAA. And they mentioned in their write-up that Talbot County's financial resilience is driven by the combination of its high revenue control assessment and high expenditure control assessment, culminating in an ample budgetary flexibility assessment. And in September '22, the last time we went out to bond, Moody's rated us. They actually upgraded us to a AA1, and they noted that financially, the county is very strong, and the management team is generally conservative in its budgeting, and that our credit strengths were low long-term liabilities with a manageable long-term capital plan and a very strong reserve position. I'd like to mention that final budget deliberations are Tuesday, May 13th. Budget adoption is Tuesday, May 27th. The public is invited to submit written public comments by Thursday, May 8th to public And for more information on the FY26 proposed budget, bill number 1585, you can visit our website at talbotcountymaryland.gov.
Okay, Martha, thank you. Thank you, Clay. So we'll go ahead and get started with the public hearing, and we'll go ahead and we've got a list up here, and I think Dr. Pepikai, you're up. So if we could sort of, you know, I'm going to try to keep everything around, you know, if somebody wants to come up here and talk for about three minutes, but obviously, you're going to be more than three minutes, so, you know, somebody that's representing something, you know, five or six minutes, something like that. I'll be leaning on the times, but just don't get too long-winded.
And we'll be calling those who are on deck. And so next will be Emily Jackson.
So, good evening, President Callahan, council members, County Manager Stamp, and staff. My name is Dr. Sharon Pepikai, proud superintendent of Talbot County Public Schools, alumnus of TCPS, and resident of Bellevue. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak this evening. I would like to begin by thanking council and staff for our continued collaboration as we have worked towards our common goal: to provide the best possible education for the students of Talbot County Public Schools. As we shared in our budget presentation, we believe we have delivered a strong return on your investment, and we want to keep the momentum going. We recognize that council is in a difficult situation in light of the requirement to implement the blueprint for Maryland's future legislation. The proposed fiscal year 2026 annual budget and appropriation ordinance, as introduced last month, includes only the minimum funding that is required by law for Talbot County Public Schools. I come before you this evening to respectfully request the council increase the school district's appropriation by 1.1 million. This request to scale back significantly from our initial proposed budget and includes only our most critical needs for continued improvement in our student outcomes. The school district is advocating for this additional 1.1 million in funding for two categories. First, we're asking for $600,000 for nine high-priority positions as follows: two social workers. Currently, all of our schools have a social worker. However, two of them have been paid through grants that are discontinued for next year. Our social workers are trained professionals who assist with mental health and behavior concerns, provide academic and classroom support, consult with teachers, parents, administrators, and provide individual and group counseling. Their role is critical in meeting the dynamic and growing needs of our students and their families. If we're unable to fund these positions with the local funds, two of our school communities will be left drastically underserved. We are also looking to hire six additional instructional assistants to provide required services for our multilingual learners and special education students. One special education teacher to meet the increasing student needs in our co-taught classrooms. Today, I had my first of my spring staff focus groups at Easton High School right here. They provided some great feedback, but what I heard loud and clear was that we do not currently have adequate staff to support our student population. Our talented Talbot County educators are suffering, and the aforementioned positions would assist with these needs. The second category of our request is $500,000 to fund salary increases for our staff. At this time, we're in negotiations with our collective bargaining units. We must offer an increase that will allow us to attract and retain highly qualified educators by keeping our compensation competitive with surrounding counties. We also must continue moving toward the mandated minimum teacher salary by the fiscal year 2027 deadline. I'm very proud of my team and the work they have done during my third year as superintendent. We look forward to launching our new strategic plan this summer. The plan expands our priorities, strategies, and metrics. It provides the framework for achieving our mission, which is to partner with families and the community in providing innovative, experiential learning that prepares every student to succeed in college, career, and life. Our partnership will continue to strengthen as we transform and perform together. We remain committed to serving all of our students and their families. Thank you very much for considering our request.
Thank you. Next is Emily Jackson, and on deck will be Andrew Burke.
Can you guys hear me? Okay. Good evening, council members. You know me, but for those in the audience, I'm Emily Jackson. I am the proud president of the Talbot County Board of Education and an even prouder parent of four TCPS students. So thank you, guys, for the opportunity to speak tonight, and more importantly, thank you so much for the collaborative relationship that we've built, particularly over the past two and a half years. We may not always agree on every line item, but I know unwaveringly that we share a common goal: the success and well-being of Talbot County's children. We come to you tonight in the spirit of compromise, which in my opinion, often, if not always, results in a win for all, with a scaled-back and focused request of an additional 1.1 million above what you've allocated to meet our two most urgent needs in the FY26 education budget. And I will say that you're going to hear a lot from me that you already heard from Dr. P., but we are very much in sync, so apologies if this is repetitive. First, $500,000 is needed to support salary increases for our dedicated staff. We would give our amazing educators the moon and the stars if we could, and I want to stand here tonight and publicly vocalize the board's support and gratitude for these incredible individuals. How do organizations show gratitude to their team members? Through raises. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention the state requirement of which you are fully aware: to meet the $60,000 minimum starting salary by 2027. We need your help right now, this year, to maintain our pace to comply with the law. Second, $600,000 would fund nine high-impact positions that are essential to meeting our growing and changing student needs. Two of these are school social workers, as you heard, roles we are about to lose due to the end of grant funding. The other seven are instructional assistants and a special education teacher to support our growing multilingual learner population and co-taught classrooms. The board was able to see some of these classrooms firsthand at our most recent building walk-throughs, and we can verify their impact and their importance. These aren't extras. They're critical for compliance and for student success. I know that you are equally as committed as we are to raising our profile, to continuing to increase our test scores, and to giving our students greater opportunities to succeed. I want to point out a rather large win. Last year, Talbot County saw the greatest increase in scores in ELA proficiency, larger than any other county in the state. This is a direct result of targeted intervention, new curriculum, and new positions to support our students. This was funded by you. We recognize the financial pressures you face. This ask is lean, deliberate, and rooted in what's most necessary to keep moving forward. The council's support can ensure our schools stay competitive, compliant, and, most importantly, capable of meeting our students where they are. Thank you again for your partnership and for considering this investment in Talbot's future.
Thank you. Andrew Burke, and on deck will be Susan Sherman.
I'm over time. Good evening, Andrew Burke. I represent the Talbot County Education Association as their local president. Fun fact, I've purchased lunches in this space for 29 and 1/2 years. It's very pleasant to be in my home stable. TCEA remains committed to advocacy for our members. Our priority is to provide effective, equitable, caring delivery of instruction and support services in public schools. To that end, we ask you to consider fully funding. The TCPS budget request is delivered in prior public budget meetings. Specifically, your recent decision to underfund us by $5 million will cause direct harm in state wages, staff wages, and salary. We'll fail to be competitive right here on the shore, right across the chop tank or to our north or to our south. We continue to see too many educators migrate away to the higher wage We continue to see too many educators migrate away to the higher wages and salaries paid in neighboring public school systems. With your vote, this can be addressed sooner rather than later in order to ameliorate a staffing problem. Furthermore, is it not wiser to mitigate the pending base pay mandate of $60,000 for first-year teachers over two budget cycles instead of deferring it till next year, about 14 months from now? That would be fiscally sound to spread it over two budget cycles without ignoring it now. Your vote could change that for the better. It is entirely appropriate to convey our thanks to you as elected officials who have seen fit to appropriate funds above the minimum effort formulas in the past. To be clear, this council has consistently prioritized public education funding and was even seen in very recent prior budget cycles. So thank you from a classroom teacher. We directly benefited from your clear decisions and your priorities for education. In looking back a few short years ago, I recall fondly certain past council members who insisted upon printing the phrase "education tax." I recall it was either bright red letters or an off color that caused great attention to local property tax bills. Perhaps an unintended consequence of this action was that it raised awareness of our funding needs. It ended up being the very best Pierre campaign that I didn't even have a hand in creating. In fact, to this day, it still brings welcomed attention to our critical funding shortfall for all public property owners to contemplate. I do continue to appreciate that reminder in each budget cycle. In closing, we do remain very grateful for your actions in this deliberative process. The appropriation of county funds resides within you, our elected officials. TCEA shares the belief that every county budget must provide adequate resources and to ensure that its public schools can deliver related services to its constituents. Let it be so now. Let it be you. Let us have a fully funded public budget. Thank you for your time.
Next is Susan Sherman, and on deck is Doug Jurius.
Good evening. My name is Susan Sherman, and I'm president of the Board of Trustees of the Talbot County Free Library. And I'm here essentially to thank you for the support you have provided to our library for so many years. Most recently, the St. Michael's renovation and expansion, which is in progress right now, and if you happen to be out in St. Michael's and can drive by, you will see the progress it's making right on schedule, so we're very pleased with that. And we also want to thank you for your support of that expansion and in addition to your support of our opening collection, because to open a brand-new building without having the collection, the resources in it would not be what we would want. And so we thank you very much for your supporting the new collection. I also want to mention again that this is the 100th anniversary of our library. We're very, very proud and thrilled to be celebrating 100 years here in Talbot County, and we will be having a number of events this year. We have, of course, the annual children's book festival in June, which has such a large turnout and provides such a wonderful opportunity for children to look at and meet authors and to obtain some of the author's newest children's books. And the biggest event we will have, we will be having ongoing celebrations all year, but on October 16th, we will be having a special gala, 100th birthday celebration. We invite you and everyone here actually to come help us celebrate our 100th birthday. It will be held at the Easton Library, and we're really looking forward to that and hope that you can attend. Thank you.
Doug Jurius, and on deck will be Lisa Hayes.
Hi, I'm Doug Jurius, and I think there's probably many people that are pretty nervous standing right there behind me. I come to you as a 27-year resident of the county. I've been a businessperson. I'm now a teacher at the Easton Middle School, and I get to see every day the struggles and the commitment that these teachers make on behalf of our kids, and they are all our kids. I applaud you for being so financially conservative. It's really important. At the same time, take a look at our numbers. We're also the lowest per pupil funding in the state. When we moved here 27 years ago, this data is very hard to find, but I looked at 2005, we were 15th. I would ask you to also look at our performance on the standardized tests. Money does not always buy success, but there is a strong correlation. So at some point, you have to say, is it time to start making an investment? Right? That typically doesn't come from finance. They're not the guys that jump up and say, hey, we need to invest in new things. That has to come from you, the Talbot County Council. And what I'm thinking about is, if you don't, right, you're going to have a new hospital. How are we going to staff it? You've already heard from doctors that were in charge of recruiting efforts that said they bring new doctors in, and the doctors are excited, they love the area, they love the people, the quality of life is great, and then they look at the schools, and they turn us down, right? So if you don't spend the money at the schools, you're going to spend it elsewhere in the county. It might not be in the county budget, right? It might show up in the fact that they've got to pay recruiting bonuses, or they've got to do retention bonuses, or they've got to do all these other forms of spending, right? And at the end of the day, if you want to be really cold-hearted about it, and you don't want to talk about the quality of the life and the quality of the people you interact with every day, and are they really well-educated, and are they really committed to the process, just look at it and ask yourself a question. If you're a wealthy homeowner here in Talbot County, which I know is a big part of the concern, it's, you know, the billionaire that decides to declare as a resident this year or not has a huge impact on the tax base, but how much more would his home or her home be worth if we were number one, two, or three in terms of our performance in the state on education? Some of you guys are in real estate, you can run the math. Is it, right? And then you say, okay, if it's X percent, if I raise the taxes a little bit in order to pay for it, how long would it take to get that money back, right? Would it be a good investment? So what I'm asking you to consider is be financially conservative, sure, but be the people that start to make the vision happen, right? Have the investment model in mind, because otherwise, you're going to bear the cost of this. It's just going to come about in, you have to have, you know, we talk about the school-to-prison pipeline if you don't have good education. We talk about lower home values. We talk about the hard to recruit new businesses. We're living in a very different world, where people get to choose where they live because of remote work a lot more. So the value of a good education system, the value of a good public school, is higher in the selection criteria. It's no longer, oh, just get a Black and Decker to build a big factory and you'll be successful economically. You've got to think about those people who have choices to where they live and work. Thank you for your time.
Lisa Hayes, and on deck is Caitlin Constant.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to be here to speak. If I could just speak very quickly to the budget for our schools, I am the proud parent of three graduates of Talbot County Public Schools who all have chosen to live here, raise their families here, and who work here. One is a manager with Shore Health, another daughter owns her own business, and another works in early childhood education. I can tell you that your investment in them back then makes a difference now, and you cannot not fund a budget for our children's education because there's nothing more important than that. And then I'll talk to you about what I came to talk to you about on, I am here representing parents and grandparents and children from the St. Michael's area, from Talbot County, St. Michael's Little League, but also parents who come to our fields to play. And years ago, I was involved at the volunteer level. I'm just now a grandma, and I get to go hang out and watch the games, and I love it. But we find ourselves constantly and consistently in a position where our children, my children and their children, are having to park out on the roadway on Route 33. If you've ever had to drive on Route 33, it's not a place you want to park. You don't want to have to be trying to get out children in strollers and small children and trying to navigate all of those things, closing the door with cars coming past you, people not always paying attention, and trying to get to the ball field to get your children to the game that they came to play. And this is caused because we have a recycling area that was moved into our parking lot years ago when I was on the board, so that was probably at least 10 or 15 years ago. It was supposed to be temporary. It was supposed to be no more than two dumpsters. Last year, we had 16 dumpsters that found their home in our parking lot. According to Maryland Environmental Services and a conversation that I had with Mr. Clark last year, he has not returned my calls this year, but I'm anticipating I will hear from him tomorrow, is that it is the most, one of the most, if not the most used recycling station in the state of Maryland, in Talbot County, which sounds great, but for us who have children out there, it's not so great, because what it means is we're not only having to deal with parking on Route 33, some of our parents have been ticketed for that, by the way, but we're also having to deal with people coming in, putting out their trash, and I'm saying trash, I have pictures, I'd be glad to send you all tomorrow through email. If they can't reach it up into the bin, or if they think the bin is full, and I say if they think, because I have pictures from a week ago, where there were piles of bags around the bins, and I could see the bottom of the bin, you could look in, and the bins weren't even full. So then we have trash blowing all over our fields that we, our volunteers have to go out and pick up. We have people dropping off their trash in refuse, not always paying attention. There are a lot of kids out there. There are a lot of kids. And it's not just opening day. You know, Tuesday night, two weeks ago, Camper was there, and we had cars parked up 33 on both sides, out from our facility, our parks, you know, where we had teams playing. Our parking lot was full, and they had unlocked the gate to allow us to park on the grass area. The dumpsters take up a lot of space, and I'm going to say this, there isn't a piece of recycled material that will take the place of a child if we lose one on 33, and that is a fear that we worry about constantly happening out there. It is not safe. It is not a safe road for us to be having. I see parents, the other night I saw a young mother getting one child out, having to have them stand beside her, getting another small child out, up on her hip, trying to then handle a diaper bag and a bat bag and shut the door, and this is all in a space about this big because there's not a lot of shoulder there either. And the whole time, cars are just going past her, and I literally was ill to my stomach, and all I could do was, you know, pray, just know anything happened, please. And this has been going on. We were assured last year, I've been calling for two or three years now and trying to move things along. We were assured that the end of last year, they would take some of the bins out, they did, Mr. Clark did keep his word on that, but we were assured this would not be an ongoing problem, that the county was leasing property adjacent to our field from the Meyerhoff family, who graciously donated that property years ago to the children of our community, not to be used as a recycling station, by the way, but for our children to have a place to play ball, and we've had some amazing ball players and people who have come out of there, and it's not just the ball players. You have people like my daughters who learn a lot on the field, who take those lessons into the corporate world, into their businesses. There's a lot more that's learned on the field than just a game. And all we're asking is that these bins be moved. If I'm wrong, then tell me what I was told that that land was entered into on a lease agreement a year ago. Does that mean that our tax money has been paying for that lease for a year? And if it has been, that's not being very fiscally stored, you know, that's not showing good fiscal stewardship in that area. There is an entrance there that can be used. They said they tried to get permission from the state roads to make the entrance into the property off of 33 to eliminate the big trucks coming in and all the traffic with our kids. That'll be another battle we'll have to take on. Right now, we just want the bins moved onto the property that the county has entered into an agreement with Mr. Meyerhoff Jackson, and we need your help. We need to make this happen. Talbot County Parks and Rec's hands are tied. We can't seem to get anywhere. At one point, we were told the bins were going to be moved at the end of Royal Oak Road, that is now being used for other things, but we were told in a phone conversation I had last year, that it was decided that it would not look nice for tourism if it was placed at the end of Royal Oak Road. Well, I dare to say that a child being hit on 33 would not look nice either, and I pray that never happens, and I don't mean to be so graphic, but it is something that could very well happen on any given day, and it's not just during ball season. The soccer clubs also use it from the YMCA. Those fields are highly utilized, more so in importance, I believe, than the trash. And we do have another option. Behind Grau's is a recycling station that exists already. So I'm just asking you to please help us to make this happen, to keep our kids safe, and in my case, not just my grandkids, but my children as well, who have to park out there sometimes. Thank you for your time, and I hope that you'll look into this.
Caitlin Constant, and on deck will be Linda Redmond.
Good evening, council members and staff. My name is Kailin Constant, and I am a proud parent of three Talbot County Public, it's okay, Talbot County Public School students and a proud public education teacher. I'm here to speak in support of increasing the education appropriation to Talbot County Public Schools to 1.1 million dollars this year. This is not just an expenditure. It's a strategic investment in our county's future. Our schools are the foundation of a strong community, and yet they're facing rising enrollment, increased mental health needs, outdated infrastructure, and growing demands on staff. Increasing the budget to 1.1 million dollars will directly support smaller class sizes, critical student services, and better teacher retention. More specifically, it would allow for the hire of two social workers, six instructional assistants, and one special education teacher and meet the base salary requirements of $60,000. Without this increase, our students with the highest needs would be cheated of an equitable education. And let's be clear, funding education is fiscally responsible. The long-term benefits include, but are not limited to, higher graduation rates, a stronger local workforce, reduced crime, and ultimately, a sizable reduction of costs in other areas of the budget. Our residents consistently say that education is a top priority, and this is a chance to match our budget with our community's values. I urge you to approve this appropriation increase and show that we are committed to our children, our educators, and the future of this county. Thank you.
Linda Redmond, and on deck will be Jen Trigo.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Linda Redmond. I've lived in Easton for 20 years. I am one of the remote workers that Mr. Jurius mentioned. I moved here in 2005. I could have moved anywhere, and I've been remote for that entire time with the exception of a couple of years. I'm the proud mother of a son at Easton High School. I'm a member of the TCPS Citizens Advisory Committee, although I'm speaking tonight for myself. I'm also on the board of My Tech Clinic, which is a local nonprofit, and we have a couple of volunteers from Easton High School who support that. I'm here tonight to advocate for additional funding for the schools. You know, this is building on the success that I've seen over the past 20 years here. As others have mentioned, I know there are a lot of really tough financial decisions, particularly this year, but we have the ability to generate that revenue, right? Other counties don't. I mean, I saw the slide where we're last for our tax rate. That, you know, causes me worry. I don't feel good when I see that slide. I didn't last year, and I don't this year. I think there's a balance. I grew up in Princeton, New Jersey, very, very high taxes, great schools. It's hard for people to stay and live there. I think there's a middle ground. You know, I think we talked about, when the financial slide was up, there was a mention of resilience, but I think, again, it's a balance. Like, I'd like to see resilience with our students, with our teachers. You know, the administration and the staff have done such an exceptional job. It's really been amazing to see everything that Dr. Pepakai has been able to do, and I think we want to keep that momentum going. You know, one of my son's teachers told me that this is the best school system that she's worked in. She's very happy here. She can't live here. She can't live in Talbot County, and I think that's really too bad. So I support the increased request. I really appreciate your consideration of that. As others have mentioned, you know, our ability to attract professionals, particularly medical professionals, depends on our schools. I think that's a really important consideration. So I thank you for your time and ask you to seriously consider the increase that's been requested. So, thank you.
Next, Jen Trigo, and then we have Kelsey Faminaro.
Hi, Jen Trigo. I'm a resident of Talbot County. I have two wonderful sons that go to Talbot County Public Schools. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but when I saw some of my favorite educators here, I felt that I really needed to step up and show their support for them. I feel like we're in a catch-22 here. We get very little funding from the state based on the income of our county, and that tax bracket is so low that we're not gaining any benefit of having that high-income residents here. I just want to really ask you to support the budget that the school system has put for. At the very least, please support the additional million dollars that they're asking for tonight, but I really would enjoy for you to fully fund our budget. Thank you.
And this is the last speaker who signed up in advance, so Mr. Callahan, after that, you can... that, you can open.
Hi, Kelsey Faminaro. I'm a pre-K special ed teacher at East Elementary School. My husband works here as the high school's math teacher. We have a daughter in kindergarten, and my son will eventually be a Talbot County student, and Dr. Pepe Kai, don't fire me for this, but honestly, both my husband and I, as Talbot County teachers, have had the conversation about, at what point do we need to pull our children from Talbot County Public Schools? Because we do have concerns about the level of education they'll receive and if they will truly be college and career-ready for whatever they want to do. And I say that kind of broken-hearted because then I worry about all the families that can't afford other options, and honestly, I'm trying to figure out how I'm going to afford other options, but I guess if I can afford daycare, I can afford anything. But I don't know if this is allowed. Am I allowed to ask people to raise their hands if I ask questions? Sorry, I'm a pre-K special ed teacher, so I'm all about active engagement. All right. Well, you threw me off then, because that's all I'm about. Well, then, let me just state some things that I'm going to assume are fairly true for most people in the room. I'm going to assume most people that are not teachers have spent less than six hours in a public school building in the last two weeks, maybe even the last three days. I understand finances. As a two-teacher household, we greatly understand finances and trying to figure out how to balance everything. But at what point do you need to figure out how to find more money? And man, I've found some great ways to figure that out. Because at some point, you just have to pay the money, or things are not going to work the way they need to work. We do need these positions. I work with students that are mostly nonverbal. They can't advocate for themselves. I have reached out to board members this year, Dr. Pepe Kai, my supervisors, both pre-K and special ed. I've had many conversations about the level of support that these students need to be successful. We're still not there yet. We're trying our best. The IAs that I do have are amazing. The fact that they stay for the pay that they get astounds me every day. We have students that aren't verbal. You have two ways to communicate, verbal or physical. They're biting, they're kicking, they're scratching to communicate their needs, trying to learn better ways, and we're trying to do that, but you have to have the money to train the staff on how to do that. You have to have the money to train the staff to feel like they know what to do when a student starts coming after them aggressively or just trying to communicate. We are paying people bare minimum to a job that requires the maximum. At some point, that has to change. Otherwise, our students are not going to get what they need. I understand if the answer is, we don't have the money now, but you need to figure out where to get it in the future because things aren't changing. Thanks.
That was the last one on the sheet, so anybody's welcome to come up here, you know, and talk, you know, what's on your mind. Please come up.
My name is Erica Williams. I have four children, and they all attend Talbot County Public Schools. I have a high schooler, a middle school, and two, and, well, one in kinder and one in fifth grade. And my littlest one, he is nonverbal and Down Syndrome and autism, so everything Mrs. Faminaro was saying is true. I really depend on them going to summer school and getting more money to send them to summer school is honestly vital for me. My son has Down Syndrome, and he is chronically ill all the time. He's been out of school at, I want to say, in the past year, like, every other week. He catches RSV. He has RSV right now and pneumonia. He's just been out of school a lot. My two kids right now, they've been sick, and my high schooler is a type 1 diabetic, so she's out of school a lot. My autistic boy, coughing now, he also gets chronically ill because he has a lower immune system. So, they are not in school a lot, and I'm really, really nervous about them not being able to catch up during summer school. So, this means the world for us, for them to be able to get that chance. So, thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Next. Somebody's come up. Someone's got to come up and say something. Sharon, you want to say something else?
If everyone has spoken their piece.
Yep. Okay. All right. Okay. Anything from staff? Okay. So, I want to thank you guys for all the hard work you've done for us to provide us the information to make some decisions in the near future. So, and I want to thank everybody here tonight for coming up here and telling us your needs, and we understand, we're listening. This place means a lot to me, too. I mean, I'm born and raised here, and I graduated here, so I know. I'm on my 40th year here, in '85, so, but anyway, it means a lot to a lot of us, that's for sure. We hear you, and we really appreciate tonight you voicing your opinion, and we respect that. I really appreciate it. Any other thing?
Yep. Close it out?
Yep. Want to close it out?
The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, May 13th, beginning at 5:00 PM. The council will be convening an open session at 2:00 PM for a work session with the finance director for final fiscal year '26 budget deliberations, and then adjourning into closed session. The work session is open to the public and will be held in the Bradley Meeting Room at the Talbot County Courthouse, the South Wing. Therefore, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvenance noted?
So, moved. Okay. Was the motion in a second? Madam Secretary, could you call the vote? Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Okay. Thanks a lot, and have a good evening.